Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us for the meeting and we start with recognitions, turn it over to Sandy.
Thank you so much. While our team from Willow River steps forward, I'll just give you a little background, we're very proud to announce that Willow River has been named one of 114 Wisconsin Title I Schools of Recognition. Look at that smile. They were recognized as what's called a high-progress school. This means they fall within the top 10% of schools experiencing growth in reading and mathematics for elementary and middle school students and have achievement gaps that are less than three points between student groups or show evidence of reducing gaps. So tonight we have a team, I'll let Kim Osier, who's principal at Willow River, share some more good news.
So the School of Recognition Award for Willow River's High Progress is a wonderful testament of what I believe embodies Willow River Elementary. I brought with me today Laurel Amphinson, our reading, our Title I Reading Interventionist, Leah Wahlberg, and Chris Cameron, who are two of our kindergarten teachers. To assist you in better understanding what this award means, I'd like to explain the process we go through in supporting our students who may be reading below grade level. Mrs. Amphinson not only works with students through intervention groups, but is also collaborating continuously with grade-level teams in looking at where students' reading deficits are. They're identifying ways to address those deficits, not only through her Tier Two interventions, but within the Tier One daily instruction as well. The partnership between these three ladies is an exemplary example of how we best meet the academic needs of our students. I'm very proud of all of the work that the staff at Willow River does and how we truly live our All-Means-All beliefs.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Board members?
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce.
So, I mean, is this something that you guys had, like, set your sights on, maybe just talk a little bit about, because this isn't something that you like, you know, just kind of fall into, or maybe just-
Do you want to tell the story?
Nope.[165.12][165.12](Laughter)
I was like, what are you talking about?
Well, you know, it's interesting, because, you know, I got the call from the state to tell us that we won this award, and so Dave and I thought it'd be fun to go over to Willow and tell them in person. And so we're standing in the hall, and anytime Dave and I walk into a building together, people think like we're the Grim Reapers or something, I don't know, it's always an interesting response. So as we're standing in the hall waiting, we're trying to find Laurel to tell her, here she comes with, I think, two of her colleagues, and we're standing there, and she says, "What are you guys here for?" And we both said, "Well, we're here to talk with you." And her two colleagues just jetted. I mean, just, just, like, literally, and she's standing there, and, you know, we pulled her aside and congratulated her.
The ladies were shaking, I'm like, what do they want? Okay, this is it, I did something, you know.
Yeah, no, so it was good, and it is a well-deserved honor, because this team works very, very hard with our kids, and some of our kids that have some of the biggest challenges when it comes to reading. And as you know, in my opinion, there's no greater thing that we do in a school district than teach a child to read, because it will change their life trajectory forever, depending on how well we do those things. And so, very, very, very thankful to this, these group of women, and not just those that are here, but the entire Willow River staff that does such an outstanding job, so.
So to go back to your question, Bruce, you know, we're always working to close that gap. So, I mean, the award is, is a nice recognition for the work that we're doing, but ultimately that, that's what we're, we're working each day, is to close that gap for all of our students.
So there is no application process, it's the state monitoring the data and finding these gems.
Oh, yeah. It's nice.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.[279.63][279.63](Applause)
Yes. Okay, it's my pleasure to introduce Judy Smith as the School Nutrition Association Director of the Year for Wisconsin. So Judy, if you can come up to the microphone, I'll just talk a little bit about the criteria that was used in making the award. The School Nutrition Association used program enhancement, staff development, school involvement, and community involvement, and you'll hear more about these things when Judy gives her report tonight as well. I asked Judy if she could reflect a little bit on her career so far, and paraphrase a little bit, but she said her career is rewarding since she is motivated by the work due to its greater purpose of making a difference in students' lives. Nutrition is an important piece of education and enhances a child's ability to learn. So we just congratulate Judy on her receipt of the award.
And I just want to thank the Hudson School District for allowing me to lead the school nutrition program. This year has been my year of assessment, and I look forward to doing some of the great work that I've been able to do in other districts here as I lead the school nutrition team forward in making enhancements for our Hudson School District kids.
Thank you.[363.78][363.78](Applause)
Our next recognition then is spring athletics, and with us this evening, to start us off, is Erin Mon, Assistant Activities Director.
Thank you very much for having us. I'm going to introduce three awesome students that I have an opportunity to work with in AMP right away, and they're going to lead us through things. I'd like to bring up Bailey Dirks, Hilda Newtonan, and Sidney Hendricks.
All right. My name is Sidney Hendricks, and I just graduated. I was a member of the hockey team, and first off, we're going to start by telling you about all the teams that made state tournament appearances, which was 14 out of the 26 teams. So I can attest to the fact just how awesome it is to make it to the state tournament after having worked so hard for it, not just in high school, but in all of your youth years, and especially alongside your great teammates and your classmates. It's just one of the most special things that sports has to offer. And also, 11 of our teams won conference championships this year.
I'm Hilda Newtonan, and I'm here to talk about the top GPA for each spring sport. So that is insane, because all those students have tried so hard, and they've been playing sports and keeping their grades up, and majority of them are in the top 20%, I believe.
Hi, I'm Bailey Dirks. I run track and I play hockey, and same with Sidney, it was awesome to be able to go to state meet for hockey, because we've been trying so hard in track, because that's always fun. I'm talking about the state tournament participat-, or student participation athletics. So 41% of the students at high school participate in sports, which is one of our main goals as a group, is to get more kids involved in sports. We started the year off with, obviously, less than that, and we were able to get more people into it just by inviting kids to sports and trying, having days where they can, like, try it free, kind of, and just getting them more involved so we can grow our population, because I can attest, like, sports for me really helps motivate me for school, too. I'm really competitive, so having an outlet for my competitiveness for sports helps me focus on my academics.
Yeah, that's you.[525.66][525.66](Laughter)
So baseball was not able to make it tonight, both baseball and softball players have games. The baseball record does not show a true reflection of the successes they had. They lost a total of 10 games by one run or less, so that 4-16 could have been a much different record if a few things, for lack of a better word term, bounced their way. A couple of things that I really enjoyed about the baseball team, as we look into the season, the record doesn't show many things, you know, in terms of success, wins and losses, but they do a Military Appreciation Day that's phenomenal right before Memorial Day, they have veterans come out, they do an awesome job establishing relationships with the boosters, where they have a team represented every day, the students run out on the field with them, and building relationships that way, and they also do a cancer benefit game. So many things going on, even though the record's not where we would like it, it was an awesome season for baseball.
I'm Bill Shob, the coach of the boys' golf team, and I have with me going to be Junior Bennett Swably. At the beginning of every season, you always think, what did we have last year? How do we think it might go? How are the players coming up? Realizing in golf, when your season ends now, their best time to become good players for next year is now. We can't wait till the middle of winter, because it's an, it's an outdoor sport. So you're always wondering how they're going to do in the summer, how hard are they going to work, what are they going to do, lessons, whatever it takes, and you really never know, because we don't see them all summer long, for the most part. And so you come in the next year, always excited, always hoping things will go well. This year, we were thinking we could do pretty good. We had a young team, one senior, Charlie Chase, on the team, and the rest were underclassmen. And so you always got a little mix of, well, not a lot of experience maybe, even though some did play as freshmen, including Bennett here. And so you set some goals and say, hey, I think we can do well in conference, well, what do we do? We, we won conference. We won five out of the seven matches for the conference, and took second in the other two, and pretty much won running away with a conference title. So that was our first goal, and it was a nice start. So after you win the conference, as one of our main goals, we say, well, what's next? We've always, everybody says they want to get to state, of course, and so that's always the number-one thing to do, but we have to get through regional first. So we go in the regional thinking, hey, I think we can do okay, we go up to superior, and we win the regional, playing some pretty good golf. And we're going, well, next step, now we need to go to sectionals, and it's here in New Richmond, tough course, weather, you never know, obviously. And we get to the sectional, and we win the sectional. And so we head to state, so we were at state last week, and winning the state was just a lot of fun. You get there, and you're not used to seeing a lot of ranked teams, we don't play a lot of them around here, because we're quite a ways away from most of them. So our groups that we're in, we played with teams that are ranked 2, 3, 4, and 5 in the state, which is exciting, some of the best players in the state, you got to play with the best player in the state a couple times during that stretch at state. And it's just a great experience for those younger students and players to see what state is like, and what those kind of players are like, and how they play, and learning from that, and just getting a great experience. So we went into the first day and finished 7th, played pretty good, similar to what we normally play. Second day, we're all the way up to 5th place, and dropped back a little bit down the stretch and finished in 7th place. So we had just an excellent season. And it's great to see not just the players, but their academics. I mean, we look at the, we have two all-Big Ten, Big Conference academic participants also. We had several players who were all-conference players, Bennett here was second top player in the conference for the second year in a row. Charlie Chase was 4th for First Team All-Conference, and then we had Charlie Chase, her senior, I'm sorry, Charlie Chase was, was the First Team All-Conference, and Ben Pendleton was a Second Team All-Conference. So we had three players in the top 10 in our conference also. And having the academics, it's amazing how well these students can come out and be great student athletes. Every year I look at the GPAs, and we see that, and we put all that information out, and we wonder how those kids can do it when they're in school, testing, obviously this time of year, we have a lot of testing going on, AP testing, we're trying to work around all those schedules and the practice tests and the actual tests, and it's amazing how well these students become really good student athletes. And we talk about that, and that's kind of an expectation, that you really do have to be both. And all the years I've been coaching, these, these golfers seem to be really good at both. And they're good students, they're good athletes, they're great kids, and they get along. And so then you look at next year and saying, hey, this ought to be good, we lose one senior, and the rest of the team from state is back, and so there's always that optimism that next year will be another good year, a number of good players coming back. So we're really excited to have another good year with a lot of good-looking kids, great golfers, a lot of practice, and I think we'll do all right. Junior Bennett Swably wants to talk.
Yeah. Oh, he's passing, so. Oh, yeah, kind of like Coach said, our main goal to start the season was to make it to state, and we did that, and it was a really cool experience, obviously, making it to state is a big deal, and it was kind of funny, because I was on the 8th tee, and I saw a couple of the freshmen who were on the JV team this year, and I thought that was kind of cool, because it'll inspire them to do the same thing that we did this year, next year. And, yeah, we're bringing back a solid squad next year, and hopefully we can do the same thing again, but do better this time, or next time.
I don't like him to follow Bill, he's a lot more well-spoken than I am. I'm Jim Revore, I'm the softball coach. We had a phenomenal season this year, our record of 15-5 overall, those five losses came with 10 runs total, so we had several one-run games. We went 12-0 for the first time in school history in the conference, we were undefeated, beating Chippewa Falls twice in the same day. To beat anybody twice in a row in the same day is, is an extremely hard challenge, especially in the big rivers. And to do that this year was pretty cool, because that hadn't happened since the history of the big rivers started with us and Chip in it. So that was pretty, a special thing for a highlight this year. We made it to the section, or, sorry, the regional final game, and we had to travel to Wisconsin Rapids, where we had a one-run lead going into the bottom of the 7th with one out, made a couple mistakes, and ended up losing 2-1 in the bottom of the 7th. So the good thing about that is it put a hungry taste in a lot of our players. We graduate two seniors this year, and they're excited to get started again for next year and see what we're capable of, go a little farther. We had six of the top 14 players in the big rivers this year, we had five First Team, and they were Sidney Gabriel, Avery Johnson, Emily Uza, Paige Meyer, Grace O'Brien, and we had a Second Team All-Conference in Hannah Stitch. So the First Team, none of them are seniors, and Hannah was a senior. So it'll be, it'll be a good opportunity next year. I'd like to thank the school board and the grounds crew, having that turf field early in the spring and being able to get it cleared off and ready for play, really puts us ahead of the game over a lot of other teams. We had played, I think, five, four or five games by the time we actually played on dirt, and no one, and the teams we faced, that was, most of them were, it was their first day on, on dirt when we went to play them a second time. So it was, it's a great opportunity, it's a great facility for us to have, it's a great facility to use, and I think for a lot of the spring sports, you see a lot of success, and a lot of that comes from being able to be out of a gym, to play an outdoor sport, nothing worse than trying to coach a game that's meant for out on a field and playing inside of a gym. Fly balls are a little rough. So I appreciate it, and we thank you very much.
I'd also like to congratulate Coach Revore, too. He liked those turf fields, because this year, an accomplishment for him was 100 wins by mid-May. So congratulations to Coach Revore for that 100-win victory.
Hi, I'm Marley Johnson, and we're from the girls' soccer team, and we had a really good season this year, we were 13-0 in conference, and Melanie a goal in for conference at the home field, it was very exciting. This year was probably the most exciting season for me, because we had a lot of potential coming up, since we didn't graduate any seniors last year, and we've, like, the older group has been together for a while, so we had a lot of potential for the upcoming season, and it really turned out good for us.
I'm Annika Lu, Annika Lewis, and I agree with Marley, we had a very successful season this year. Conference, being conference champs was like one of our main goals coming into the season, and we were able to succeed, and girls' soccer hasn't won conference since 2002, so that was like really exciting for us to win.
And overall this year, we were 19-3, and we got the fourth seed in the section, giving us two home games. Unfortunately, our last home game was at the end of the season for us, but we're hoping for something better, as we're going to be graduating 10 seniors this year, so.
Annika, how long have you guys been playing together?
Probably 10-plus years.
Yeah. I read something that you guys have been playing together since 4th grade, I believe.
Good job.
Boys tennis also not able to make it tonight, but they did have a very successful year. They, again, for the third year in a row, can't get past Eau Claire Memorial for that conference championship, but they're always competitive, and they believe in themselves that one day they'll, they'll turn that corner. But we did have nine of 10 varsity players advance from subsectionals to sectional play. That means they were one step away from achieving that state goal, and four of our student athletes did. We had Tyler Gross and Jacob Gross for singles, and Luke Johnson and Jack Gurkink for doubles, as far as advancing to state, and that was part of that 14 groups of our programs that advanced to state this year, being boys tennis.
I'm going to be talking about both track teams, since the boys didn't want to come, I guess. So the boys, the boys, they got 3rd, they got 3rd in the Big Rivers Conference, which is good for them, last year. Well, last year we had a lot of people, they had a lot of people graduate, and nobody thought they were going to do as good as they did, so they did pretty good. They had pretty much everyone that joined this year made it to state, which is kind of cool for the seniors, you don't really hear about that often. They had three First Teams in conference, two Second Team for conference, and then three honorable mentions, and then they had five entries in the state meet, two of them were distance, there was a relay, and then Carter Mock for hurdles, and Torren Phillips for the 200. And then for girls' track, I have little more to say about that, since I was on the team. So I would just like to start by saying thank you for having the track team here, I guess just me, because no one else showed up. We had a wonderful season, and we wouldn't have been able to do it without the amazing facilities that we have been given these past few years. I started on the Newton Track, and as much as I love the Newton Track, it was really nice to be able to run on the home stadium for my two years. The past few years, the girls' track team has done pretty incredible. We've won four consecutive conference titles, four consecutive regional titles, and three consecutive sectional titles. In the past 15 years, we've had 12 conference titles, 13 regional titles, and seven section titles, which is pretty amazing, considering our section is one of the hardest to come by, especially in distance, which we have a lot of distance people go. This year, our team won conference, we won regionals, and we won sectionals, which is pretty good for us, because as much as the boys' team graduated, we had more that graduated last year. So there was two seniors, two girl seniors, that ran track, me and Emma Olson, and we had a very young team, out of the 75 girls that came up for track, around 20 of them were juniors and seniors, so we had a really young team. The freshmen, I think, pretty sure they doubled the sophomores. So the freshman, we have a really, really young team, which is really exciting. This year at state, we had a lot of entries, we had three tea, or three entries on the podium, which is top six, so our 800-meter relay with Ava Wilbur, Molly Columbach, Emma Olson, and Bailey Dirks, me, we got 6th place, we got 5th, and then they, like, DQ'd someone in an accident, and then they, like, ON-DQ'd them, so we got 6th in the end, but it's pretty amazing, considering everyone except me and Emma were underclassmen and never, never ran at state, and if you haven't been at state track, it's like, pretty sure it's 10,000 people that are watching you, and it's just super nerve-wracking, so. Being, we had Ava Wilbur start, and she's a freshman, so her not false starting is really good for her. I got 3rd place in the 100-meter hurdles and broke a school record, and I got 2nd in the 300-meter hurdles. I did not beat the school record, but I was pretty close. Our distance team, our 4x800-meter relay, they got 15th over, or, yeah, they got 15th overall. That team was Anna Suprina, Emma Filippiac, Alicia Bellany, and Rachel Ball. And then Rachel Ball got 13th in the 1600-meter run, and Rach, or, Alicia got 20th, yes, 20th. So basically, this 2019 season, we were blessed to be so decorated as we were. The team looks bright for the next few years, and this year we did host three track meets, including the Big Rivers Conference, JV, and although they didn't score it, we still technically won, because our coach scored it, so, which is really good for them. For the 2019 season, being my last season as a Hudson Raider, I was truly blessed to have such a supportive coaching staff, as well as supportive teammates. There was never a meet where our team wasn't cheering each other on. With the true connections and friendships that track has given me, as well as my, me as well as my track team, and beyond words about how supportive, caring, and inspirational all our track coaches are, we hope to see all of you, hopefully, at the 2020 season at some of our home meets, because I think we have five of them next year. So, yeah, thank you.
Bailey, question.
Mm-hmm.
What is, you are truly blessed as an athlete, and what is amazing is, how tall is a hurdle?
Uh, there's-
Where does it come to you?
The 100s are, I think they're 30 inches, and the, or, the 100s are 32 inches, and the 300s are 30, so it's like my waist.
Right. So it comes to her waist, and what is amazing is, you should see her fly over those hurdles. The other thing she left out, and I'm giving kudos to her, because she's a senior, is how many times have you gone to state in the last four years?
Um, I've gone to state in 10 events, and I medaled in six of them.
Okay, you medaled, so how many times were you on the podium?
Or, eight, I was on eight times, sorry. Eight of them.
Eight times, so she's been on the podium eight times. So special congrats to Bailey.
So to wrap up with a couple of things, we had a college celebration day where we bring all athletes that are going to be continuing their athletic careers at the next level. We had 24 student athletes this year, between Division III, II, and I, all pictured there, as well as our two WA Scholar Athletes. A handful of these athletes right here are part of that group right there, and we love celebrating that, because we believe in an extension of the classroom, and they could just get to continue that at the next level. We love following more now than ever, because social media is very helpful. One example, if you're into college baseball, Michigan is going to be in the College World Series. Alumni Miles Lewis is playing in that College World Series, so we love just seeing what they become once they leave Hudson High School, and it really is an exciting time for our seniors. The last thing, which didn't make it in, we are really excited, as a program, to be starting an in-house athlete performance program, starting this summer, we're going to be running it through summer school. We have 300 high schoolers signed up, which is 130 more than we did last year for our Raider Elite Strength and Conditioning. We have 125 middle schoolers signed up, which is 80 more than we had last year. So we're real excited to have everybody at the high school using our facilities, and it is all free of cost for the kids. Everybody's really excited, our coaches are excited, and they are, they are the ones that are going to be in getting their hands dirty and doing the coaching, so we're looking forward to this summer. Anything else, Ms. DeVos?
I forgot to mention Anna Heinz actually qualified for Academic All-State for softball in our awards, so.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
Okay, great job to all our athletes, and thank you for joining us, sharing your successes. It's great to see. All right. All right, next on the agenda is would-be citizens' request to speak. Do we have anyone? Okay, the answer to that is no. So then we move on to superintendent's report.
You know, I'm shocked that not everybody wanted to stay for my report. You know, only people that are being forced to, to stay at the meeting are still in the audience. No, I, I just wanted to touch on one item briefly, since we have been together for half a day Saturday, we're going to be together tonight, and then again next Monday, but what I wanted to touch on tonight was legislative update. As you may or may not be aware, the Joint Finance Committee has passed out of their committee what they think the funding is going to be for education. Originally, we thought it was going to be 20204 new state money for education, that's not actually the case. That's not actually the case. What it is, it's $25 each year of actual new state money and then it's $175, $179 essentially increase in the levy limit. And so for other districts, that's really, really great because before what was happening is they were getting new state money but not being able to increase their levy limit. So really, it was coming in the form, a lot of them is property tax relief. And so for us, really what it does for us is it increases our under levy. So in order for us to get the 20204, we will need to levy for it essentially. And so that's something as Tim will be going through, I think preliminary budget stuff at next week's work session, something to keep in mind. The other piece that they did is the governor was asking for 30% special ed reimbursement first year, 60% the second year. They came back with, I think, 28% the first year, up from 26.4%. So not a huge jump. And then 30% the second year. So again, not a big jump. I would say that probably the budget battle is far from over at this point because right now we have two sides that are both, I think, kind of digging in their heels. We have the governor that really wants the Medicaid expansion and we have the House and the Senate that do not want to give into that. The thing is, is the high watermark is always the budget bill that goes to the governor. And the governor has the most powerful veto in the state, the line item veto that they have. But what happens with that is all the governor can do is actually reduce amounts. They can't add to the amounts with line item veto. And then also because the legislature, I think, is somewhat worried of what that veto pen can look like because he, the governor can change words and different things, make them plural, all kinds of different things. They are going to give him, from what we understand, two different kind of budget bills. One that is, has only monetary things in it and then another bill that has no money attached to it. And part of the reason they say they're doing that is because the governor's line item veto only applies to bills that contain a fiscal note. And so one of the things that we've always been cautious of over the last however many years, I think they said the last time that they split the bill, the budget into two different bills was like 1938 or something like that. So we've always been cautious because what can happen is a lot of language or a lot of legislation can get rammed into this kind of omnibus bill and it allows, you know, members of both parties to kind of coverage to vote yes on things they might not normally vote yes on. But it is, it's just far from over. So with that being said, if the governor decides to dig in his heels, come July 1, if we still don't have a budget bill signed, then we are kind of frozen in the current appropriations. So they'll just roll into the next year. The governor does have the ability to veto the entire budget bill and send it back to lawmakers. Nobody quite knows what will happen if he does that because the lawmakers could say, well, that's the best we got. And if you're going to veto it, then I guess we're just going to freeze the next biennium at the current rate, which would mean no new increases for any departments across the board. So right now, it's, we're kind of, I don't want to say in uncharted water because we've had divided government before, but I think the biggest challenge that we have right now is the lack of communication between the parties and just willingness to compromise on both ends, which ultimately puts people that require state services or state funding kind of in the middle of some of this stuff. I've had multiple conversations with Representative Zimmerman about the budget bill. I've talked to Senator Schachner about it, but being in the minority party, she doesn't really hold a lot of power. Representative Zimmerman, however, sits on the Joint Finance Committee, which is the most powerful committee down at the state. And we've respectfully disagreed on certain issues. And you know, my biggest point is at some point, they got to quit attacking public schools. Because I think, you know, people in the state of Wisconsin are showing time and time again they like their public schools. And one of the concerns I had was, I think there was $594 million allocated in this budget, new funding for public schools, which sounds like a lot, except I think the last budget that came from the Walker administration, which I don't believe anybody would probably claim that he was a big proponent for public education, had $640 million for schools. On top of that, I think the private and voucher and charter schools are getting 100 and some million dollars out of this budget bill. Yet I think somebody had told me there's 30 some, 35,000 students in private or voucher schools, 800,000 students, 850,000 students in public schools. So essentially, almost 25 times as many schools, students in public schools, yet we're only getting five times as much funding as those other programs. And so that's where it's getting to be a little bit disheartening that the funding rate at some of these other, these other components are going up at a rate far, far faster than what we're doing on the public education side. So that's the biggest thing right now legislatively because the only other bill that's getting some legs a little bit is this lunch shaming bill. You may have heard about it on the legislative advocacy that you're seeing from WASB. And it's not necessarily a terrible thing because I'm a big proponent that we shouldn't be shaming kids whose parents don't pay their bills. I just don't, I don't think it's the fault of an eight-year-old if mom and dad can't pay their bills. So therefore, I don't think we should be giving separate lunches or throwing lunches away. The big problem we have, or that I see with the bill, is the inability for school districts to collect unpaid lunch accounts and the inability for us to deny. And so essentially, what, you know, what the bill says is you can't deny somebody a lunch for basically any reason. And then if they run up a negative tab, you can't collect on it using any type of collection agency or small claims type of thing, which would be the route that we would go if it gets too large. And so, you know, I think it's, in nature, it's not a terrible bill. But I mean, if they would allow us to still have avenues to try to collect, because a lot of times, it's some of our folks that run up unpaid balances, it's not necessarily always because of inability to pay. Sometimes it's just not willing to pay. And so I think that is one of the other big pieces. But right now, because the budget is such a big battle right now, there hasn't been a whole lot of education legislation floating out there. And I think the other thing is, is the GOP-controlled House and Senate, I think, realized that anything that may be overly detrimental to public education in the form of bills is more than likely going to get vetoed by the governor. But this lunch shaming one is kind of a, it's kind of an interesting one because it comes from a perspective of, you would think that, you know, it would come from one party or the other. I mean, it would be awfully hard for the governor, I think, to veto a bill that says we're not going to shame kids whose parents don't pay their bills. But then again, I think the governor also knows that school districts, you know, can't just fund everybody's lunch, you know, without any type of recourse. So it will be, it'll be kind of an interesting update. But right now, the budget, they plan on having a final budget to the governor here in the next probably two weeks. What that looks like, I don't know, we'll see. And as you know, like I said, the Medicaid expansion was about a $1.4 billion hole. Right now, when the legislature said, no, we're not, we're not willing to even take that money, that immediately took about $1.4 billion of funding out of what the governor was proposing, right, wrong, or indifferent, that's when then all of a sudden things started to kind of go sideways, where both of them have kind of dug in their heels. So questions about legislative updates or what's going on?
Any questions for Dr. Olet? Okay. Thanks for the update. All right, and we move on to reports. We have several tonight. So Nick, do you want to introduce those?
Yeah, so we'll have people come up in the order that they're coming and they're on the agenda. I think Rivercrest is up first and...
Is there any reason to take anybody out of order?
I don't think, does anybody have to leave early or? No, yeah, go ahead. Sit or stand, whatever you'd like to do. Have some water. This is your oyster, you just let us know.
One question, unless there's a reason not to, can we move Willow up so that we hear the four elementary reports in a row? They just, it would seem that they'd be logically clustered.
Yeah, sure. I mean, that's fine. I mean, in the past, we've gone school, department, school, department, school, department. But yeah, we can move Willow up, whatever you guys like to do. This is also your oyster as well, so if you would like to...
Yeah, you're still, I'm just saying, yes, I would like that if no one objects to...
Yeah, we can put Willow right after Rock.
Great, thank you.
All right.
So thank you. I always enjoy sharing our highlights. And I think this year, I'd like to start with the kind of, not the front page of the report, but the school highlights and successes and tell you a little bit about laying the foundation for the year for us, which was built on kindness. So that was our theme for the year. Every month, we focused on different character traits that helped us to be kind to one another. Some of the actions that we did brought, focused on connections and those hearts and the hopes that we work with every day with our young students. So we developed a kindness cruise, which were smaller groups of students made up of kindergartners, a few kindergarten first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and then broken up into our certified staff into smaller groups. So we had 34 groups altogether. We met once a month and worked on making connections with people that you might not always make connections with. So some of the kindergartners with the fifth graders and third graders. We did some fun things together to set the stage in the morning at our staff meetings. We would do some of the fun activities that then we would be doing with the kids later on. So it helped us make connections as a staff as well. It was really well received by our students. They loved it. Our staff loved making connections with kids for a reason other than trying to get them to do their reading, math, or their writing. It was purely just about connecting with kids. So that kind of laid a framework for us within our year. And as I move back then, within our like SMART Goal action steps, one of the things that we did, and we had talked about that with the district, updated our benchmark assessment system. So it's a way that we're assessing students in their reading development. It's a more rigorous calibration process. So some of the scores that we had gotten previously in the system we were using looked like we were going to do significantly better on those state assessments than we actually did. So the calibration process really brought the teachers together to figure out what is it that this system is asking for us? How, what is it asking for the students? What are we assessing that and to what level of independence are we expecting students to be able to do this? So it was a K, all of the elementary schools did this calibration process. Led to a lot of good discussions amongst the teachers in developing those common expectations. And it also handed the tool back over to the teachers on a much stronger basis. So we weren't monitoring as much of the collection of the data as much as we were developing conversations about what they were learning through that assessment tool. So then that, I think, all of, two of those things, plus some other of the action steps that are, my colleagues will talk about, laid a framework where we have seen in preliminary results with our MAP assessment, greater success than we've ever seen before. So one of our goals was to have 62% of our first through fifth graders meet their growth goal from spring to spring on the MAP assessment. The window had just closed and we've got 69% of those meeting that. We thought 62 was going to be a stretch so that we went so far above. And then our kindergartners were at 73% from their winter to their spring and how much they grew. In addition to that, we also, we set a goal for 65% of our students to be at that college and career readiness level, which would put them in the advanced or proficient on a standardized test for the state. Our preliminary results looked like 68% of our students. So again, exceeded that, the goal that we had set for ourselves. And I think we laid that all down and that framework and that focus on kindness and connections. And through that foundation that we're built on, we see great growth with our students. So collectively, the collective system with all of the teachers and all of the staff and the teaching and learning and our coaches and elementary principals, the collaboration we do, it all helps this happen for our kids. So we appreciate your support as well. Questions?
Yes, Sue.
Well, I was just going to say that when I looked through the highlights and successes, I just thought it exuded a real refreshing vitality. It's just kind of leaps off the page, so it looks good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. President? So I really appreciated that the report included not just the what that your staff are doing, how they're working collaboratively, but also the, clearly there are measures that you are using to track not only those end game outcomes, but how you are using time, I mean, the percentage of time that your team is spending on different subjects. So it was really helpful to see, yes, the goal, yes, the progress, and really to give a clear sense of what that looks like when it comes to the way that your staff are collaborating to help these kids grow. So thank you for the way that you presented the data, it was great to see.
Thank you. Probably get a spreadsheet for just about everything.
Excellent, well, thank you for the good news report. Appreciate that. Next up, looks like we have North Hudson.
And again, thank you, Board. This is always a nice night where we come and share our successes, whether it's departments or individual schools. I will start just with the data piece and then go into one of our SMART Goal action highlights and then also just overall school highlights. But one thing that I want to point out, you know, each one of our buildings has at least one growth goal and at least one achievement goal. And our growth and achievement goals are pretty similar. Our growth goal for North Hudson was to get 65% of our students meeting their projected growth. And so we talked about closing gaps. We close gaps by having kids get more than a year's growth on students that are further behind. So our baseline last year was 60%. Our goal was 65. We met that goal. This past late summer or early summer or late spring, we had a consultant in from NWA MAP talking about growth with us. And she informed us, you know, if you get in the 60s range as far as your classroom percentage of students meeting their growth targets, that's above average growth for a classroom. Once you get to 70%, that's excellent growth. So those have been some of the benchmarks that we've been working off of our staff. And we're pretty excited to be at 65, moving towards that 70, getting more and more classrooms to that excellent mark as far as percentage of students meeting their growth targets. Last year, when we presented as a board, one of the things that I know that they talked about was, or you talked about, is making sure that we're doing some stretch targets. And my second bullet there really is a stretch target for North Hudson. So last year, K through 2, we had 55% of our students meeting that college and career readiness with MAP. We set it pretty high. We set it for 65. We didn't quite get there, but we went up six percentage points. And so we really celebrated that. We set a stretch goal and made some good progress. And that 61% really does funnel into that overall goal of trying to get our students to that 70% because there's a good correlation between college and career readiness on the MAP and then the forward results. So anyways, how did we get to some of these growth and achievement results at North Hudson? I would like to talk about the second, third, and fourth bullet under the SMART Goal actions. So Tim, if you could, or if you could bring that up. And really, it was work between our district and professional development around Jan Richardson guided reading. So we had two half-day trainings for our teachers, one in the fall, one in the winter. But in between that, at the building level, we had a real commitment to purposeful coaching with our instructional coach, Amanda McCarthy. So she did one cycle with all of our classroom teachers, which ended up being an average of about four coaching sessions with our classroom teachers. And my teachers knew that from fall until their next training, it was really about coaching. So I wasn't coming in then, it was getting the coaching support. So this lesson planning wasn't feeling as messy for them. And then we had our second round of training and they knew after that I'd be coming in to observe the lessons and then the second round of coaching would start with Amanda. Well, for the year, my classroom teachers averaged over eight coaching sessions with Amanda. So that was great. I was able to meet with her and see some of the gaps. And so a couple of things that we did at the primary level, we knew that the site word work was a piece that we needed to come back to. There's just so much in the lesson plan that you miss some of it. And then at the intermediate grades, it was the vocabulary that we had to come back to. So we had really strong work with our staff. I know that they're feeling really good about going into it next year and feeling confident about it and knowing that they had time to learn it before I was coming in to see kind of where we were with the implementation. But as far as a highlight for the building, I would really like to hit on our Love and Logic classroom strategies. So that's going to be bullet 1, 2, and 3 under the highlight section. That's the next page. So this past year, we studied as a building at a staff meeting a month, the Love and Logic classroom strategies. It really is about building relationships with kids, not getting into arguments, neutralizing arguments with them, giving them some void... getting into arguments, neutralizing arguments with them, giving them some voice in solving problems. So using empathy, so they're thinking about how they're going to solve it instead of us solving it. It's a great tool if we can help kids solve problems when they aren't so big. And so they feel confident with solving problems when they get larger for them. Also, just enforceable statements, you know, what things can we use as, as teachers that we can enforce with students? And, and how do we delay consequences until we can figure out what would be the best consequence for a child in a, a certain situation? This was an area of need in our, our building. So our staff reported that, you know, less than, half of them really felt like they had options that worked well for them when problem behaviors came up in their classroom. By the end of the year, through this training, they felt eighty-five percent of them felt, or about eighty-five, eighty-six, I think, felt like, yep, we have options when there's behavior that we can handle and be able to keep, keep teaching. So that was another one of our big highlights from this past year, one academic and one more social and emotional for our students. Any questions for me?
Questions, board members? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity for the last time to highlight some of the successes at EP Rock. And I, I took a focus, similarly, the elementary principals talked to each other about the kinds of actions that we might want to talk about. So one of the ones that I want to mention is about a year ago, we bought a book for every one of our classroom teachers. It was called Learning by Doing, Rick DeForre and his wife. And the book was an attempt to revitalize our teams when they met, so that it was around student data and student work. And one of the things that can happen if you're off track and you're busy and you're planning field trips, you don't spend the time you should talking about student data. So we revitalized our PLCs over the last couple of years to really focus on student data, to help teachers know what to do next with students. And the thing I thought I might read, I also included a video, and I hope you'll take the time to look at that video, highlight some of the learning that the students did at the building, which brings it all the way down to the student level. But our teachers, at the end of every year, reflect on their work during the year. They set goals at the beginning, and at the end of the year, they reflect on their work. And principals read those electronically. And it tells you, you can see what the teachers were doing compared to the data. We're reading them at the same time. We're reading about what's happened in a particular classroom. And so this teacher highlighted, similarly, the work that a lot of our teachers at all of our elementaries did this year. She said, "In the fall of two thousand eighteen, we committed to meeting three times a month as a professional learning committee, community. We focused on using common formative assessments, implementing the Jan Richardson framework, utilizing the BAS kit, both those things were mentioned, to increase rigor with reading comprehension. We worked hard throughout the year to balance our objectives and ensure that our work was meaningful towards student achievement." We began by looking at student writing and trying to determine where there was work that needed to be done. And our collaboration around Jan Richardson's work with guided reading helped us guide our next steps. We brought data in, we looked at how students were doing, where the gaps were. And then definitely, the, the new way we were assessing students in reading had a new level of rigor that the teams addressed. So the, the structure, the goals were all around the fluency and comprehension rubrics that we developed within our team to help guide instruction for our students and help them achieve at high levels. And I think we all saw tremendous growth in the way that our teams worked together this year. Just a couple highlights. At our building level, we've continued to focus on trauma-sensitive approaches. Students with behavior concerns, it impacts learning. So we had a school-wide focus, again, on reducing the number of office referrals. And in the end, some of our actions resulted in a thirty-seven percent reduction in office referrals, which in any particular classroom, that's significant. It has children spending more time in the classroom and doing what they need to be doing. We also had a, tied into that mindset work that our school counselor did. She took the students from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, with my help, the students that did not meet their, their goal in reading. And she worked with them. It was fifty-three students who she worked with over the year, who did not meet their goal the previous year, and worked on mindset and the power of positive thinking. And seventy-three percent of them this spring met their growth goal in reading. So lots of different actions, and you can read those. And I hope, again, you'll take the time to watch the video. So a couple of them highlighted their reading successes. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. And we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
See now, are you sure you want me to go? I'm out of order. Okay, all right. Oh, there I am. Okay. So at Willow River, we also, as Dolph and Katie both talked about, with, with the stretch goals and really continuing our work, like with the School of Recognition, looking at that, closing the gap as, but we are really looking at it the two different ways, the, with a growth as well as that overall, the overall achievement. So I have our, some of our preliminary results for our SMART goal also up there. One of the things is, is Amy was talking about was our work with the professional learning communities, otherwise known as PLCs. So one day during each of our six-day cycle, our PLCs met. But we added an additional component by having an AM meeting with the critical care team. So we were able to continue that all means all philosophy. So our specialists, such as music, art, FIED, gifted and talented, as well as special ed staff, supported one of grade level and met continually with that grade level throughout the year. And then during our monthly leadership team meetings and our special ed team meetings, those representatives would share out the work of that grade level to really continue those vertical conversations to also help with that team knowing about that upcoming focus, those next instructional steps. We found that this helped to further that cross-subject cohesiveness and that in-depth knowledge sharing. Through these meetings, some additional elements were, were added within, like some of our specialist areas. For instance, FIED. So in FIED stations in kindergarten, Lindy began naming the different centers with sight words. Or at the beginning of the year, she included letter naming in some of their warmups. So it really added that bridge between those, those two areas. One other, we also did the mental health components. We have a variety of different strategic actions I tried to highlight here. But one that I really wanted to bring out was through a five-month partnership that we had with Camp St. Croix. Last summer, the Lilly Frugley Endowment Fund was created in memory of Lilly Frugley, a Willow River student who had passed away between her fourth and fifth grade summer in that tragic accident. So the endowment fund is run through Camp St. Croix, but, and it supports an AWSSOM award that's given, being given to a fourth grade student nominated for their awesomeness, which is something that Lilly used, a term that she used continuously. And it's to fund a fourth grade student to go to Camp St. Croix. Lilly was really looking forward to going to Camp St. Croix with her fifth grade class that upcoming year. So we thought that this would be a wonderful way to honor her memory. So this year was our first year to present that AWSSOM award, and it was presented last Friday at our all-school meeting. So in front of the entire school, we had Iris, Lilly's sister came, her mom, and the nominated student's family came as well. And we presented the award to Luke Lotters, who's a student. He just joined us mid-year in fourth grade. So he was recognized for his awesomeness. And I just wanted to share with you what the teachers had said in the nomination that was also shared with the entire student body. Luke Lotters embodies many of the same wonderful qualities that Lilly lipped. Like Lilly, Luke has a smiley, positive approach to life. From standing on stage and dancing his heart out joyless, joyously, to helping classmates conquer multiplication facts, Luke is helpful and positive in all that he does. Whether it is making lunch for his teacher as a total surprise, bringing praying mantises into the classroom to share his passion for learning, Luke has an energy that is infectious to all of those around him. It is for these reasons and so many more that we nominate Luke Lotters for the Lilly's AWSSOM Award. So that was read in front of the entire student body. So just in a, a different type of highlight, but I thought it was worth sharing at the board level. Any questions?
President, I'll just make this comment. I, I think in the few years I've been here, I keep hearing more and more opportunities for teachers and faculty to interact with one another. And I think that's only a very strengthening element, because otherwise you generally can feel kind of isolated. And so I, you know, I applaud that morning meeting and to start the day.
It really makes a difference for the students.
Heather.
Just one more. And I appreciate all of you really calling out the instructional coach work. I think that's something that for many parents in the district, including me, until I got on the board, I don't think people think about that, that level of professionalism that we've incorporated into our district staffing, that yes, we have classroom teachers, yes, we have principals, and we have these highly-trained instructional coaches who are working very intentionally with our classroom teachers to really improve their, their, their art, their, the science of their teaching. And so thanks to all of you for highlighting that. As something I think, I wish there was a way to help the folks who live in this district better understand just how much is going into really raising the level, the quality of the teaching that, that's happening in, in all of our classrooms throughout the district. So thank you.
I just, you mentioned the first annual AWSSOM award, which I think was a great idea. And I liked the idea that it was also awarded to somebody who came to the school, you know, mid-year. What's this thirteenth annual champion for life? I know it wasn't the first annual, like the AWSSOM award, but the champion for life scholarship?
Oh, that, that is given to a fifth grade student, and it's been given for the, in Davis Room, for the last thirteen years to a fifth grade student to also attend Camp St. Croix. But it's in recognition of a parent who had passed away at the time that she had the, the wife of the, of the father that had passed away. She had students that were in elementary, middle, and high school. And she was so impressed with the way that the Hudson School District had come together to support her through this time of loss and supporting her children, that every year she comes back. She doesn't live in the area anymore, but she drives back to present the award to a fifth grade student. So our fifth grade farewell is tomorrow, and she'll be driving back to present that. Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
Thank you. I guess, should we have one more before we take a break?
Sure.
All right. So next up would be community relations and community education?
All right. So the, the community relations piece, you have the department goal here with the, the goal of being effective in reaching seventy-five percent of our stakeholders in our communication. You've got two data points from the school perceptions survey results, both which are good and also provide us with information of where we need to go next. Also, this year, I spent time with our website and social media analytics. So again, we know who we're reaching through our social media and website and where we need to focus energy. I do know that from the analytics that it is critical that we continue to send out our written, our newsletter to our full community. That's a critical piece of our communication and because obviously not everybody is on social media. And it's a, a very successful tool for us in communicating what's going on in the district. In the highlights piece, I want to talk a little bit about the school age care piece here. I know Michelle Hagan will also be talking. We did a survey of our, our summer staff at the end of last summer. And that survey indicated some areas where we needed to really dig into and support, look at ways to better support our school age care staff. You see the results. This, the data that's here is from a spring survey. We're really happy to see where things are at now. This is a significant change from where we started the school year. With regard to school safety, you know a lot about what we're doing in this area. The one additional piece is we've been invited as a school district to participate in a statewide effort by the Department of Justice to develop a school safety tip line. So we're doing, doing that work this summer with the hope to launch that in the fall. And then the other piece about communication that I think is really important and worth noting, we've done a lot this year and continue to work on connecting better with our families, our non-English speaking families. So we have, I've been working with the ESL teachers and IT to look at ways that we can better, or to improve our communication in different ways that we can reach families who are not getting information because they do not speak English. So I think that's a, a great piece that we started to put into motion this year. And then if we jump to community education and our facility rentals, you've got data here that talks about what our participation rates and our number of classes. I think the one piece to note, because our participation numbers are a little bit lower this year, we did not have swim this year in community ed during the school year. We had an incredibly difficult time finding the swim instructors. And rather than really overload those swim instructors, we just decided to put the program on hold. We're working with the YMCA to look at other opportunities to continue that during the school year. It's a needed program, and we want to figure out a way to make that successful. We opened the fitness center, as you know, this year. The other, I think, really cool highlight here is the annual daddy-daughter dance. We had almost eight hundred participants in this event. This is huge. And we probably will be looking at moving to the high school. We did it at the middle school again. But it's been a fun event that probably started out closer to four hundred four years ago. So it's been well-received by our community. And then with the facility use, you can look at the numbers here. These numbers are the, the time that our buildings are used outside the school day. And if you start, if you look at these numbers, our buildings are not very quiet outside the school day. We are very busy. We've increased the number of facility permits, so the number of users. And then also, if you look at the revenues from our rentals, we're up about forty thousand dollars over last year in our revenues for, which would be consistent because our actual hours are up. That's community ed, facilities, and community relations.
Mr. President, I just want to applaud the idea of, of better communication with people who have a different home language. And I'm reminded that right around our last snowstorm, you now have the call in the morning in, in Espanol as, as well as English. And I think that's a great idea.
We, we also started, there's a page on the website, a Spanish page too, so that we can direct families there.
Any other comments or questions? And I should have foresaw, maybe you want to go into community or the school age care? Should we go to that report next?
Certainly. Michelle's here, and she'll cover school age care.
Thank you for the opportunity. Can you hear me? A little bit low. The opportunity to talk about school age care. At the top of our document, you'll see some of the numbers of children that we represent, and how many children we have on a daily basis, and then how many we have for this summer. I think one of the highlights that Tracy touched on was the amount of time we spent this year working with staff to create a more trusting environment and to create better relationships between administration and how they feel about their work. I think the survey was, I was really proud to see the number of staff that are trusting that the administration is in their best interest. that the administration is in their best interest. We continue to improve the staff professional development, and currently they all meet the state licensing requirements for full-time regular caregivers, which required them to participate in 80 hours of the childcare classes offered by the state of Wisconsin. We have been working cooperatively with principals to make sure PBIS is followed across the board, so the same expectations on the playground during recess are also at school age care for consistency with students. This year, we've developed and implemented monthly family newsletters and also a staff newsletter. In both of these, we've celebrated success of staff and success of students. The parents really enjoy getting their information in that format, and of course, all of the people involved look forward to seeing their pictures and shout-outs to their successes. We really had to spend a lot of time working with our teams to develop trust, to make a leap of faith into how we were going to work with them differently, rather than the way that it's always been done. So we developed weekly team meetings with the staff. It required everybody to participate, everybody to share, and we've done really well with that. We've developed a new employee onboarding process with our summer staff orientation. Today, we spent all day with 20 excited, talented, new people in the district, ready to begin working this summer with our students, and over 40 different activities available for students. So I think we've done quite a bit for school age care this year. Thank you.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you for the report.
Thanks.
Is anyone else mind if we take a four-minute break, five-minute break, before we go on with the other reports? All right. We'll have a stand for a five-minute break. We will resume the hearing of the reports, and we have, next up, finance and operations.
Okay. I'll take that. So I'll, I'll run through some of the different highlights of our department over the past year. One of our big ones was the, the teacher salary structure, the 2.0 version. So this was the, the second go-around on the version. And so we had a performed, we had a budget model out to project the financial impact and also created the interactive calculator, so teachers can go out and really kind of plug in their situation and get an idea of what, what their salary looks like. One of the other larger pieces that we're doing this year was, is the time management system along with the time off, and that's for all of our hourly workers. So they'll, they'll actually be putting in time cards, putting in electronic time cards, and a lot of that's in collaboration, I should add, a lot of this is in collaboration with other departments as we go through the list. So particularly, human resources and IT on this one. One of the other bigger changes this year, which is really not real transparent, is the SS school-level reporting, which is the reporting by site. We, as a board, had a, had a look at the budget that we submitted to DPI, and then we'll be, every school will be required to report by site. That was a fairly big behind-the-scenes piece that happened. Independent audit, we wound up last year with revenue and expense variances of only 0.9%. So that's a really very small variance as we, as we look at budgets. Grants compliance, we worked on a number of grants this year. Also, working with instructional technology on our cybersecurity, we made a number of improvements, and I've been told that we're actually ahead of a lot of other school districts in that area. RFPs for services, again, you've seen some of those things, commercial insurance packages, and also the district-wide copier equipment and lease. Those are very technical in nature, so again, we reach out and work with departments and collaborate with departments when we do these things. On the referendum construction side, wrap-up of construction projects, construction is just kind of the, the gift that keeps on giving. And so we continue, even though we're done with construction, we continue to work with contractors on some of the incomplete work or some of the, some of the pieces that, of work that are defective, and we're, we're trying to work on a, on a payment-for-progress program with them, so that gets their attention when we do that. Worked on some closeout documents with, with our attorney, architect, and construction manager to close out those projects. Worked on furniture, furniture purchases, and in operations, of course, we have the middle school pool, which we continue to work through, and I think we're getting close to a short-term and, and possibly a longer-term plan on the pool. So that's great. Raider Fitness Center concessions and addition services, those last three bullet points on that page, again, different things that were with the, with the referendum. And so that wraps up. That's my three minutes, so I'm going to stop there. Well, thank you. Change that font.
Any other questions on the, on the finances? I know we've got some overlap on this stuff with finances, facilities, community education. So, I mean, if we ask a question, anybody could answer it, or if you can't think of it tonight, there'll be some opportunity over the next 12 months. But still, this is kind of more the annual overview. And Jim, you're next with facilities.
I have to read off my paper. I can't see that well anymore, so.
Neither can we, so.
Well, the first two bullets I have here are really related to the high school project. And, you know, one of the things I did not put in there is, you know, I talked about 12 semi-trailers full of stuff that went back into the high school, and 11 semi-trailers full of stuff that we either repurposed or disposed of. There was probably about 25 semi-trailers full of stuff that were still in the high school, that we moved from one section of the high school to, to another one. So we dealt with probably, I don't know, 45 semi-trailers full of stuff that we wound up getting placed back in, in place and were ready for the school year. And then there was all the stuff that the contractors had, that we had to work with them to move out. It, it was quite, quite a process. It was quite an accomplishment by my department and by the high school team, who were just very integral in it too. So I, if Peg was here tonight, I'm sure she's going to be here another night, I would assume. They were just fantastic to work with. And then that was really a, a big deal, and we were ready on time. It frankly, it came together very quickly at the end, and, you know, it went from one day looking like, "Good lord, we are just not going to make it," to like, three days later being, "Wow, we made it." And that was not from lack of any effort, I can tell you that. In conjunction with the Holton principle, we, we got a new playground installed out there. Sue did a lot of, of work with that, and we kind of coordinated the installation. We replaced about 16 and a half thousand square feet of carpet last year. We did about 70,000 square feet of painting, and I think that's low, because that's, there's a lot of painting that's done by the guys on a building level that I just, I'm not even aware of. You know, they just painted that room, and, and I, they didn't tell me. I mean, I, I know they're painting, I just didn't notice every single room that they're doing. We installed some auto flushers out at the middle school restrooms, which drastically improved the hygiene and sanitation out there. We put some acoustical treatments down the Willow River Cafeteria, which was, really turned out well. That space was nearly unusable for any type of meeting. It was pretty loud and echoey, as I'm sure Kim can attest to, but it got a lot better after we did that. Replaced the lockers in the middle school pool. That one is a freshly new-done project. We did dugouts at the high school softball field, so that the varsity girls' team could start playing games there. We can, we coordinated the installation of the window safety film district-wide, and that's a project that's probably about 80% complete right now. There are two elementaries left that need to be done. The others, I believe, are all done. There may be some caulking left. We developed and organized a new storage area at the high school, including a rack system, which increased storage capacity. We are in the process of implementing a new electronic work order system to improve efficiency, effectiveness, and reduce paper use, plus it will greatly improve my ability to do this report next year. I'll be able to talk about numbers of work orders and buildings and things like that. We standardized chemical usage and inventory, including the safety data sheet program, creating a safer environment for staff and students. That was a huge job. You know, we got a lot of square feet here, and a lot of cupboards, and a lot of classrooms, and a lot of stuff in there. And we really got a better handle on that. And then standardized our own products, updated all our SDS sheets, and really cleaned that program up. We're about 95% complete of a 680-item commissioning issues log for the high school. We're getting close. That has been a long slog, and it's been difficult. And the last 5% of the items are the, the kind of tough ones that we're really chasing down right now, and we continue to work on them. We developed and implemented a new onboarding and training process for the facilities and grounds employees, preparing staff for success in their first year, and that was one of our goals for the year. And we were able to complete that. We developed and implemented a new process and forms to facilitate the new support staff compensation system, also one of our goals. We hired and onboarded and trained a new evening supervisor, and that one item enabled us to do about three or four of these other things, that chemical inventory, developing that onboarding process. That, that one item, I would like to thank everyone who was involved in approving that position, because it was a huge, huge change for our department. We relocated our facilities and grounds office off, over to the high school site, so now I get to be a part of the high school on a daily basis, with kids knocking on the window to let you in the door, and all the other fun stuff that comes with that. And then we cleaned and maintained 1.1 million square feet of building space daily, and we covered about 1,190 events for the school day, which is really close to matching Tracy's number, I think hers was 1154, so I was pretty close. And then that's approximately $53,000 hours. Now, the difference there is I'm counting some of the stuff that's happening during the day too. Because even if it's scheduled during the school day, we, there's still an element of support that's needed from our staff, whether it be setup or cleanup, or whatever it might be. So that's just the real quick summary of what we accomplished this year, so. Is there any questions?
Any questions for facilities?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a quick one. I happened to be at EP Rock when they were putting the film up on the windows. Did we, we contracted that out?
Correct.
And were they 3M people, or?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's a 3M product, but they're not 3M employees.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Jim, very appreciative of all these things that get done that I think are often overlooked, but I guess I've been inspired. I always do enjoy your facial expressions.
Okay, all right. I've been called animated before, so that's okay.
Just trying to top that font selection, maybe.
Well, with that, we have nutrition services, yes.
For the first year, this has been a very productive year for us. I'm going to break down my report into four different areas, and I did provide some different photos, hopefully, that you'll be able to see. We have, under nutrition and menu development, taste-tested several products with our students this year. Weren't sure if we were going to get to those, but what I wanted to highlight for you is we were able to bring in different brokers, and they were able to go to our schools with us. And they actually helped us taste-test things with our students, such as macaroni and cheese at Prairie. And our little ones are so excited to get that on the menu next year. And you'll notice that I incorporated brand names onto the presentation, not to sell those products to you, but so that you can see how commodity diversion foods have come such a long way. No longer are we using generic-type products, but we are able to use products that you see in a grocery store. 100% beef products, products that are cleaner-label products. And the most important products, or part of this presentation, is you will see four or five different pizza products that are now taste-tested and selected by our students to be menued. Items were highlighted and underlined because those items have already been incorporated into the menu this year. I didn't think that would happen. Typically, we have to wait until next year to put the commodity foods on, but some of the brokers were able to donate and transfer pounds for us this year, and we were able to actually put our menu on, in menu pizza this year, and change out the whole-grain crust pizza we were using to some of the products this year, and our students have been really happy with that. So that is all under the nutrition and menu development, so we were fortunate to use our commodity pounds a little differently. Research and taste-test, set up our taste-testing procedures, and actually worked with brokers to start changing out our menu products this year, under our menu and nutrition development. Also, we were able to start our new menu analysis program. And we're going to be putting our allergens and our menu in a different program, which we'll be able to put online, and it will make our menu look a lot nicer for marketing. Under operations, we are working on a new breakfast program, which you approved for next year for six of our elementaries, and we're excited to roll that out. Research shows that the number-one thing you can do to improve test scores is add breakfast. So obviously, that is exciting, and we're looking forward to also receiving the grant money, because we did receive the grant, and we'll be able to buy milk coolers for the new breakfast program and some marketing. So that's an exciting thing that's going to happen for us. And under operations, we also have been working on assessing all of the policies, the training, and the equipment and the procedures this first year. And we hired 11 new team members, which is fifth of the work team for school nutrition. So standardizing the daily tasks, and the whole last row here is the lead team for school nutrition. They've been great in helping us train and transition the new employees. And we also worked on having a new RFP for a new prime vendor. And we'll be able to save money on rebates, because it's a national company that we will be buying from, and be able to use that money for other things, hopefully, training. Under administration and facilities, I'm proud of the fact we were able to work with our team and pass our audit of our federal programs. And we also were able to open Elements Cafe in Common Grounds, and some of our district staff is also here in the back row. They helped us get the high school up and running. We were also able to train our staff and have vendors come in. Vendors came in and helped us learn how to use all of the new equipment. We had a chef come in and train us on knife skills, and we had, we were able to host a chapter meeting, and we actually had a bunch of training and professional standards for regional staff as well. For communication, we had a bunch of training on conflict resolution for our leads, as well as having lead meetings to build our team. And we discussed implementing student groups with the principals, what would work best for them for next year, so we can make this program more student-driven. We also worked with the nutrition team and with the district office on meeting catering needs, and we're working on a catering booklet, as well as à la carte pricing, in developing ideas for marketing and what should be included on our webpage. And I thank you for the opportunity to present our year-end review for school nutrition. And so far this year, through the end of May, I was able to put the numbers together. We have met 403,404 students by providing them nutritious lunches this year. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions, just would, maybe one question. Does your staff get to do the taste test as well, or is it just with the kids?
Yes, we do let the staff taste test, and we do try to take pictures, but we haven't been taking as many as we should. But we wanted to have some photos of the food, so that you could see the event, and then you can see some of the ballots laying on the table as well.
I'd just like to also say thanks to the staff for coming in this evening and spending some time with us. Appreciate that. And then my last comment would just be, you know, consider the board for taste testing too. You know, I mean, we certainly be open to that.
And helping us, it's really fun, and normally, we don't lay out the brand, but in the photo, we wanted to. But typically, we will do blind taste testing, but we wanted to in the photo, and then you can see the brokers on that photo. And they'll come in and they'll do it for free, just so you know. So we have four different types of pizzas that have been tested. tested this year, so we're not partial to one company.
All right, just curious on the, you said about 20% staff, new staff in one year?
Yes, we in it's because we had to add a lot of staff for the high school as well. So that's one of the reasons.
That's what I thought. That's what my question was going to be.
And we had some retirements too. We're going to see more and more of that in the next few years.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you for all the years that they put in.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, one quick comment. I I happen to occasionally have lunch at EP Rock and they do a fabulous job with steamed broccoli. I don't know.
Working for them. Trying to get them to eat their vegetables. That is so important. Kids love vegetables. Yes. And if you roast vegetables too, that that does help, so.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is transportation.
This is Time's new Roman. Andrea likes it. She's my boss, so there's where it's at. So I just want to say, nice to see you guys again. Thanks for having me. And as I talk to Andrea about accomplishments and highlights for transportation, not being here at the very beginning of the year, I wanted to make sure I hit the mark. So these highlights and accomplishments that I'm going to speak to, I felt like serve as great examples for how we prioritize transportation in the Hudson School District. So we focus on the safety of our students, the efficiency of our routes, the clarity, accuracy and timeliness of our communication. And finally, I wanted to make a big deal about the relationship and collaboration we have between our chosen provider, Safeway Bussing. So something that shocked me was that in the Hudson School District, on a daily basis, we shuttle around 4,000 students. To do that with very little incident, I thought was great. We go to 11 4K sites, six public school elementary buildings, one public school, middle school, one high school, two private schools and four out-of-district specialized education buildings. We do this by successfully completing 204 different routes, shuttles and runs made weekly. That doesn't include the field trips and activities we do. We do this through regular transportation, specialized transportation in district, specialized transportation out-of-district and then 4K. Our turnaround time's on average, meaning if you put in a request for busing or I receive one from Student Services, tends to be about four days, which I thought was great. We get requests for students getting busing from New Richmond. We'll get it from Baldwin was the most recent one I got, or Spring Valley. And for our provider and ourselves to be able to collaborate, communicate and get that kid to school, I got to say to Amy Hamburg, who I started nine years ago as a student teacher, we had some tough conversations with parents and she always said, the goal is to keep them at school. So I'm literally doing that right now. But to be able to turn around and do that within, I think that one took two days and that kid's life was not interrupted one bit as much as we could control, was great. As I spoke about last time, the implementation of Tyler driving the tablets, we have them on the entire fleet of Safeway buses. I kind of talked about it last time, how it's a secure web-based software that I work on. The tablets, they give us the real-time routing information. It's also came in handy when we get a phone call about, I had a bus that dropped off here. I can pull up exactly where a bus is at any time of the day. And I can watch the history of where they've driven. So working with Dolph at North Hudson, we piloted the student ridership program, which would be the RFID cards where the kids scan on and off the buses. It worked great. You know, they scan on, I see they scan on at 408, 413, our closest one is, is dropped off. I can pull that up. If I get a phone call, we can look it up. The idea next year would be to train the office staff at the buildings to do the same. We also piloted the parent portal, the website app, Ride360 at North Hudson Elementary School. This is something totally new to the parents in the community in Hudson. It gives them a real-time look at where their bus is. It gives them an ETA within three or four minutes, I'm finding. And then they also have their bus details, such as where just what time is my bus supposed to be here and where do I get picked up digitally, which we didn't have before. Before, they'd have to call in either to a building or to the transportation department or possibly to Safeway to obtain that. Well, now they have it. Once the change is made, they see it immediately. One of the big ones was implementing communication protocols with the building principals, which have been awesome to work with, the district administrators here at this building, the Safeway administrators and then also our community support leaders, such as, you know, I found this job to be you cannot prepare for what's expected. You get things under control and they tear up Vine Street for the last month of school. But it's all about knowing who you need to connect with and doing it. When you know you need to do it, you need to do it. So everybody I've been able to work with has been very responsive. I can tell you, everybody in this community wants what's best for the kids, which makes my job a lot easier, because I'll be the first call typically. So we have accident protocols, last job protocols, implement weather protocols, which usually starts with Nick texting me at 4:00 AM. A lot this year. And then the last one, which which honestly kind of ties it all together, because we hire Safeway to do what they do, but if we don't work together to do it, it doesn't work for anybody. So I found Andrea and I have made a point to really build a relationship with them. That works. Any changes, I communicate to them. They understand this is still a working relationship, but we got it in a good place right now, so I'm really happy with that. Otherwise, that's it.
Questions on transportation? When does the preparation for next school year start?
It started. So right now, I currently have, obviously, we have new boundaries. We have 46 routes drawn up for next year already. Once we roll over Skyward, we can really, because right now I'm just working with kind of a mythical word where I grade advance, in June, the end of June, we're going to advance everybody through Skyward and roll it over. And I'd say by July 15th, all routing will be done, first draft, send it over for the eyes at Safeway to take a look at, and then kind of bounce it back and forth. Hopefully, all bus details, not hopefully, all bus details will be out early August.
Early August. And then then the, is there a burden that shifts to the parents at that point to confirm?
We will. Well, so luckily enough, you guys have been supportive enough to offer me a support this summer. We'll be making phone calls to every family, checking that as they register, you have to say, yes, I want transportation or no. Doesn't matter what you said, we will be calling your house, confirming with you, you know, you said yes. Are you sure? Which house? And that'll be our confirmation. And then I feel like we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is as much as we can. And again, expect the unexpected, but
Sure.
By that time, that bus details will go out, we'll have reached out in every way that we can.
Hopefully, you don't have to make too many rounds of phone calls then.
That's what we're hoping.
Yeah. Yeah, other questions?
Yes, Steve, with the pilot program that you did with North Hudson, that'll be district-wide next year?
So next year, yep, that will be implemented district-wide. Right now, Dolph, speaking with Dolph, great idea, we're collecting feedback from parents at North Hudson on how their experience was, in order to just make it the best possible thing we can next year. But yeah, that'll go district-wide the beginning of the school year.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to ask basically the same thing, but I was also going to say, are you, I'm sure you're going to be tracking the parent use of that app as well?
Yep. So you can track the users. You can, I couldn't actually see how often you're checking in on them, but we can send out, I'm thinking we'll send out a survey halfway through the year saying pretty much the same thing we sent to North Hudson right now. How are these features of this parent portal working for you? And then reflect and refine after that.
Very cool. Very nice. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, very good. Thank you for your report, Steve.
Thanks.
Yeah, whenever transportation gets some applause, we'll take it. All right. So moving on now to topics for action. We have consent agenda motion up on the screen, if we can raise it up a little bit so we can get the amount or scroll down.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,497,988.55.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve the consent items with the spending provision as quoted. And there's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. On now to topics for action.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. President.
I was going to ask if there's going to be some retirements here. I didn't get to that tab yet.
Yes, so we did, we have had a few retirements, different timelines when it comes to support staff. But we have Nancy Gillen, who was a special ed para at Willow River, 17 years of service. Kim Fritchie, Nutrition and Services Lead, who had 18 years at Hudson Prairie. And then we do have a teacher retiring as well, retiring with, in her particular situation, just didn't take advantage of the recognition banquet and all those bells and whistles, but still retiring at the end of this year, 20 years of service in the district, is Meg Derrick, fourth grade teacher at Rivercrest. And then Dave's going to speak about the last one.
Yeah, so we have a retirement from someone that works with us every day here. Lori Nelson-Lundell will be retiring, longtime employee, very dedicated employee. We're a little nervous about her retiring. She she knows a lot and has a lot of institutional knowledge and runs our Skyward system, but
Oh, Skyward. You nervous that she's retiring because of Skyward?
Yes.
She knows things that
Correct, yes.
That kind of worry, right?
Yeah, about Skyward. And she was formerly a an administrative assistant at the high school and then worked in HR and now works on our Skyward system and manages all of our student data and actually supports every department in some way in this in this building. So big shoes to fill.
Excellent. Well, thank you for pointing out those people who have been here for either 20 years or nearly 20 years. And we appreciate their service. All right. Then with that, move on to the second reading of Personnel Policy Series, Personnel Policies Series 500. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We got Carrie made the motions, Sue made the second. And these are the policies or portion of the 500 series, because we had to divide it up, there were so many. But personnel is a large area and some of these policies hadn't been changed since 1990. And the legislature almost annually is putting new mandates in and things that we have to keep up on. So a lot of updates there, so that's why we see a lot of red in the drafts of these. We talked about them at work session. We've had a first reading that was passed. And I don't know if we had any questions since the first reading, but is there any comment, further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the second reading of the 500 series, Part 5, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Move on to deleting procedures. I don't know if we can do this in one motion. We have to have separate motions for these two. They're kind of linked because they're being replaced with a different
Mm-hmm. You can just say as presented.
The two procedures. Okay.
As you mentioned, things keep changing. So approximately a year ago, the legislature changed, so we have now the early college credit program. And it was just an oversight on our part not to delete the old policies. And that's what we bring to you tonight.
So we have some redundancy that needs to be eliminated.
So move to approve to delete procedures 343.4 course options and 34342.42 youth options.
All right. There's been a motion, a second. Anybody want to debate this one? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. And we now are to that part of the agenda where entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Move the board will consider a motion to convene to close session pursuant to a Scottson Statute 1985, Parent 1, Parent G, to confer with legal counsel for the school board, who is rendering written advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation and which will likely become involved. Second.
We have a motion, a second. We have to take a roll call vote. So Baumann?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Kattas?
Aye.
Logland?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Motion passes. We will now convene to close session.